The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
All right, tonight is Tuesday, January 3rd, 7:00 PM. Regular meeting of the Plainville Town Council. We'll begin with our pledge of allegiance, and I'll ask Councilman Rocco to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Put my mic back on. All right, we do not have any other presentations this evening, but we do have a public hearing, and I will ask the town clerk to please read the notice of the public hearing.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, in the council chambers of the Municipal Center One Central Square to hear public comments regarding the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for fire equipment replaced at the fire department. Estimated cost $346,000, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 30th day of December, 2022.
Thank you very much. Okay, this public hearing is pretty straightforward. We had a visit from our fire chief at our last meeting explaining the equipment that is going to be purchased through our ARPA funds, and basically what he told us is it's the air packs that they wear to fires. They're going to be replacing several of them, and they'll be in use for five or eight years. Michael, I don't remember the time of it, but if you wanted to fill that in?
Yeah, and we also, I know the chief, I thought he was, yeah, he's still here. If we do have any residents or questions about that. But they're about 16 years old right now. We're going to replace 36 of them, and they'll have a 16 to 18-year lifespan. So that's, again, we're at 16 years at the end of their lifespan. We're hoping that with the new ones, we'll get the same kind of lifespan out of those as well. But 36 units that are interoperable with other departments when we have those mutual aid type of situations where they can, we can use the same tanks and equipment. So it's, I think, a very valuable and worthy investment in terms of their operation.
Okay. Thank you for that information. All right, I will now open the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak to the public hearing, please come to the podium to my left up here. Please state your name and address, and I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? Anybody wish to speak to the public hearing tonight? Last chance. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and move on. Next item, minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve the December 19th minutes, please?
Adam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to approve the minutes from December 19th, 2022, regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and reports? Do we have any announcements or reports tonight to share? Rosemary, it's not your week?
No, no, not this time.
Nor mine. Okay, we'll move along then. Appointments and resignations, item number one.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to postpone appointments of the fire chiefs until January 17, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, firefighter appointment.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to appoint Joshua Malevi, 361 East Street, Apartment 2H, as a probationary firefighter of the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number three.
Madam Chair.
Rosemary.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Francis Cooley from the Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Just FYI, Francis Cooley was elected as our next state representative, which is why he will no longer be serving on the library board, so we congratulate him for that. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number four.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Charlotte Politis from the Plainville-Suddington Regional Health District Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? If we could send Charlotte a letter of thanks for her service, I think that would be nice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Are there any other appointments or reappointments tonight?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Rocco.
I will make an appointment to reappoint, or excuse me, make a motion to reappoint the following individuals to the Economic Development Agency. Mark Chase as a regular member for a two-year term ending November 9th, 2024, and Tim Maynard and Mark Romanov, both as alternate members, to a two-year term ending August 7th, 2024.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Are there any other appointments that are not on our agenda tonight that we'd like to take care of? Okay, thank you. All right, item six, going through that. Item number eight, report to the town manager. The town attorney is not here this evening, so we won't have a report from him. Michael.
Yes, good evening. The first item is number, number one item is the Capital Region Council of Governments. We have a guest, the executive director, Director Matthew Hart, Matt Hart, I believe is, yes, he's there with us, participating virtually. Sorry that we couldn't have you here in person, Matt, but we certainly appreciate being able to meet with us virtually. And so I'm going to, I think we're going to turn the, or share the screen with Matt, and you have a presentation you can walk us through, and the floor is yours, Matt. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you so much, Michael. I really appreciate it, and I'd like to thank the chair and the town manager and all the council members for the invitation to speak with you tonight and for allowing me to participate virtually. I am dealing with a case of post-COVID bronchitis, so probably better than I'm participating in this, in this manner. So I'm in my first year at the Capital Region Council of Governments, and as part of my efforts to get to know our communities a little bit better, I'm trying to get out to each of our 38 towns and make a short presentation to their town council, Board of Selectment, just to talk about the work that we do. I have worked in the Capital Region for a good long time, primarily as a town manager, most recently for the town of West Hartford and then the town of Mansfield before that. And actually got my start in this profession with the town of Windsor, not so far away. I was very excited when Michael, when you hired Michael and brought him here to our region. Think he's a top-notch town manager and colleague, and we've worked together for many years now. And also excited that you've been able to bring Andy Ceroli over to town as well. Think he'll prove to be a great fit. I've had a good working relationship with their predecessors over the years, most recently Robert Lee and Sherry Osley, and even now Bob Jackson before them, for those of you who recall Bob, he was, he was a great man. And I recall coming to town, oh, probably in 2006, 2008. I'm not sure if you had anyone on the council back then, but Robert was working with the council to promote shared services and, well, at the time. And a group of us came out and met with a group of counselors and Board of Ed members, the superintendent and Robert, and talked about our experiences with shared services in Mansfield. And as I recall, it was a very spirited discussion. It was a very spirited discussion, and kudos to Robert and all of you for getting all that through. And I'm glad that really, that shared services between the town and the school district has become very much a part of your culture and your DNA. Just to all of you that I'm going to bring up now. And Michael, if you could let me know if you can see that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So what I want to talk about tonight is just a little, very quickly, about the role of councils of governments in Connecticut, if that's new to you, and Andy could probably teach it better than me, given his experience. I'll talk a little bit about our structure at CROG, some current initiatives we have underway. I'd like to review some elements of our benefit statement for Plainville. We issue this annually. It's a five-year lookback. And then take any questions or suggestions you might have at the end. So councils of governments in Connecticut, they've been around for a good long while now. CROG's been around for approximately 50 years. There are nine of them in Connecticut, as you may know. They were consolidated most recently in 2014, 2015. And the councils of governments provide a regional framework to allow towns to work together and to help coordinate and deliver programs. We don't have county government here in Connecticut, as you may know. We're one of two states without any functional county government, just us and Rhode Island. In Connecticut and elsewhere, COGS can also function as a metropolitan planning organization or the MPO. That's a federal designation. And in that role, with that hat on, we oversee regional planning, particularly transportation planning, as well as the administration of federal transportation dollars. And most of Connecticut's COGS also double as the MPO. So looking at CROG a little bit, the Capital Region, we're the largest of the nine, and we serve 38 municipalities, including Plainville and the capital city of Hartford. We've got a population of almost a million residents now. So it's a good-sized region, especially by Connecticut standards. We have approximately 30 employees working in four departments. So the first one I'll mention is our Municipal Services. And this department works to support our Municipal Services Committee, as well as our Regional Purchasing Coalition. And I believe the town is an active participant in the purchasing coalition, where we competitively bid goods, materials, supplies, and services. You know, we do the due diligence on our behalf of our member towns, and they can purchase those items from our approved list of vendors. We also conduct various special projects, which I'll touch on later, and we engage in legislative advocacy. We just put together a legislative agenda, something we do each and every year. We're going to try something new this year, and we're going to present it virtually to our almost 100-member legislative delegation next week on January 10. The next department I wanted to mention is relatively new. It's Regional Planning and Development. And this group staffs the Regional Planning Commission, administers our brownfields program, as well as our land use and brand-new economic development initiatives. And this Regional Planning and Development Group used to be part of a larger planning department, but we broken them up into two, just so that we can have a little bit more focus. And the third department I want to highlight is the one you probably are most familiar with, because this is where most of the dollars are. This is our Transportation Planning Department. And this group works to support our Transportation Committee and the MPO. They conduct planning studies, and those are important. I'll talk a little bit more about those in a minute or two. And they administer our popular LOT-SIP and TRIP program. So LOT-SIP, that's the Local Capital Improvement Program, Local Transportation Capital Program, excuse me. And TRIP stands for the Rural, the Rural Program. These are both administered, and the funding is provided by the state. So it flows from Connecticut DOT down to the COGS and then to the member towns. And then the last department that we have, last but certainly not least, is our Public Safety and Homeland Security Department. And this group works to support the Capital Region Emergency Planning Council, and it administers grants for public safety, emergency management, and public health, and staffs the Capital Region Council of Police Chiefs Association. This small department's been very, very active over the course of the pandemic, as you can imagine, you know, helping to distribute PPE and administer regional vaccination clinics, regional grants, any number of things over the course of the pandemic. So moving on, just to talk about some of the important committees that we have at CROG and the representatives now. The Policy Board, this is our primary governing body, and the chair of the council is automatically a member, and she has the ability to designate an alternate, and you have designated the town manager as your alternate. That is a very common model for our communities that are council manager, that have that form of government. So it's great to have the council chair and Michael involved there. The Transportation Committee, your town engineer, John Boss, he has been very involved for many years now. Our Regional Planning Commission, which administers our regional planning, conservation, and development. We've got a regional plan, like you have a local plan. He is actually chaired by your representative, by Jennifer Bartis Early, and she does a great job in that regard. And Andy is a new member of our Municipal Services Committee. At Municipal Services, this is really where we're vetting a lot of ideas that become, eventually become CROG services, so it's great to have Andy as a new member of that group. And then our Capital Region Emergency Planning Council, I don't think we've had an active member from Plainville in a little while now. So if you do have someone working in the emergency management field that might have a little time and could get involved with that group, we would greatly appreciate it, and I think you would benefit from it as well. Next, I wanted to touch on some examples of current initiatives we have underway. The first one I wanted to highlight is a state grant-funded program, the Regional Performance Incentive Program, or the ARPI. And this was created back under the Malloy administration, and the Lamont administration has just brought it back for the first time and made awards, starting in 2022. And under this program, under the ARPI program, the state provides three years, three years of seed monies to help you establish a new regional program or service. So CROG was just awarded grants to establish three new regional programs that we're excited about. Animal control, assessment, and code enforcement, with an emphasis on building inspection. We surveyed all of our members, you know, where are you? Support at the COG, tax assessors, any number of municipal employees, especially those in technical fields, are becoming increasingly harder to find. So we are, over the next year, over the next couple of years, we're going to be starting these three regional initiatives, and the town of Plainville is certainly welcome to participate in any or all of these three. So we're very, very excited about that. On our infrastructure projects, which I think you're probably well aware of, under the bipartisan infrastructure law that was approved by Congress and President Biden, this is a five-year initiative, major investments in a variety of infrastructure nationwide. In Connecticut, we're going to be receiving a little over $5 billion over that five-year period. One of those that's most, the most prominent is what's called the Safe Streets for All Program, and this can be used to make streets safer for all users, you know, not, not just for vehicles, but for pedestrians, cyclists, et cetera. And those projects must link to either a local or a regional safety action plan. So we submitted our first round of grants last fall, and we're currently preparing for the next round this coming fall. Another grant I wanted to touch on, which you are very familiar with, is the RAISE Grant that we received, the $16.4 million we're receiving with your support to construct portions of the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail in, in your community. And that project, now that's been a long time in the making, as you know. It started off with planning studies about 10 years ago, but that's a testament to how long some of these critical infrastructure projects take. So I want to commend you for sticking with it, and we'll be excited to move forward to the design and then to the construction phase. The East Coast Greenway, which you know the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail is a part of, the East Coast Greenway goes all the way from Florida to Maine. It's about 3,000 miles, and there are a couple of gaps left in Connecticut, and we have a study underway right now to close the remaining gaps in our region. And this would take the trail from Simsbury into Bloomfield into Hartford and then into East Hartford. So we'd be able to connect the trail system we have in the western part of the state that goes through your community with the system we have in eastern Connecticut. And once this is all done, we'll probably have 150 to 200 miles of a connected multi-use trail here in our state alone, which will be a tremendous achievement and quite an attraction. Next item I wanted to touch on is our Waste Management Study that we have underway. You're probably all familiar with the fact that the Mira plant has closed in Hartford. I believe you are probably using Quantum or an entity out of Suddington, but waste management is a significant issue for our region with Mira's closure. So CROG has embarked upon a project to identify some short-term and then longer-term solutions for our region, because most of our towns are in a position where we have to haul our residential waste out to other parts of the country, and it is growing increasingly expensive, and it's not a sustainable solution long-term. And our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or the SES, and that Economic Development Strategy, that's something we update every five years, you know, we need it in order to obtain federal and some state grants to support economic development. And this strategy is essentially a compendium of all of the major economic development initiatives across our region. And at CROG, we are looking forward to, at some point in the future, to be, to being able to, and hopefully the near future, to being able to add some, some of our own dedicated economic development staff at CROG who can work in our towns, particularly our smaller towns that do not have dedicated economic development personnel, as well as to work on economic development projects that cross communities. Now, and this is the second to the last portion of my short presentation tonight, I wanted to review our benefit statement, which we will send to you by mail if we haven't already. We do this for each of our 38 towns, where we take a five-year snapshot, if you will, and it's an effort to point out what we see as some key benefits, how they translate in terms of dollars for your community. And as you can see, most of what's been identified here is an infrastructure project in some shape or form. Cook Street reconstruction, Northwest Drive, the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail, that's some of money, that's for the planning study that was conducted, I think, in the 2018 timeframe. So this does not yet cover the RAISE Grant. We'll be adding that at some point in the future. So this is a snapshot of some of the infrastructure and planning studies that have involved your community, either your community exclusively or your community in collaboration with others. And then breaking the dollars down, just from another perspective, transit programs, regional plans, capital planning projects, that's where you see the most of the dollars. Again, those street and roadway infrastructure projects that I pointed to in the previous slide, as well as some other important categories, public health, our Regional Services Grant, which we receive from the state, which supports our municipal services activities, and our Regional Purchasing Council. You know, some of what, this is our estimate in terms of what you saved over this period of time by using this, this service. So that's just a very quick overview. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to come out tonight and spend a little bit of time with you, and appreciate everyone's involvement at, you know, I think it's so important that we work as a region. There's a lot we can do, working together collaboratively to capture an economy of scale and to take on the region's big issues and challenges that, you know, don't necessarily respect municipal boundaries, whether it's stormwater management, any number of things. So I'll pause there, Madam Chair, and turn it back over to you and the town manager. I'm happy to take any questions or suggestions you might have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. CROG certainly has done, been part of a lot of, lot of work in Plainville, with a great many projects completed, and there's certainly more to come. So we do appreciate all the efforts that CROG has helped us with. So we do, we do understand the importance of us being members there. I'll open it up to the council. Does anybody have any questions for Matthew regarding some of the projects that we've done and upcoming, coming forward? The trail is one of them, of course. I know there's some paving, is there a paving project that's come onboard soon for next, this coming season?
Quite a few projects, yeah. And I'm, actually, I have a question for Matt, and pardon my back, but the, the services part, the shared services or the pilot for, I believe there were three, animal control was, was one of them. What were the other two, Matt?
Assessment and code enforcement, Michael, with it. And code enforcement, we're going to focus primarily on building inspection.
Right. And which towns are, is that, is that basically a pilot that you're rolling out?
Yes, I think we've got roughly six to 12 towns that have signed up for each of those, but you are, you are welcome to join at any point. And again, the state will provide us three years of seed monies to help support the program. The way this works is the state will cover 75% of the cost in year one, 50% of the cost in year two, and 25% of the cost in year three, with thinking that if the program's going to be successful, you have to find another way to fund it, starting in year four. It's a pretty successful program that's been around for a while, and the Lamont administration has, has just brought it back. So we're, we're going to be taking a little bit of time to get it up and running. Under the building inspection program, for example, we have, we'll be looking to hire a full-time coordinator for that program, someone who is a licensed building official. We'll have some monies available for administrative support and also to hire two part-time building inspectors who can be assigned to one or more of our towns and rotated as needed.
That's, thank you, Matt. That, the, yeah, the code enforcement piece and building inspection is something I think Andy and I are going to continue to talk about, dialogue about, and maybe, maybe something we, we look into, but we'll certainly have a conversation with you offline. That's great.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I have a question about that as well, the code enforcement, and you're, you're saying it's going to focus mostly on building inspection. I know that when we lost our building inspector to retirement, we had for, foster, we had a time period where Bristol was doing our building inspection. We were sharing their guy for a while, but he was so busy that it took time for him to get around to projects, and, and it really put time crunches on some things that were happening in town. So with you saying that they may be handling more than one town, so we would still be sharing the code enforcement officer with other towns as well?
And the way we, thank you for your question, Councilor. The way we see this working, at least to start, is that the program would be designed to supplement the services in place in our member towns. Over time, some of our smaller communities may decide to rely on us exclusively, and they'll have the ability to do that as we build up our, our resources, once we get the program up and running. But early on, we see ourselves primarily as a supplemental service. For example, when you have a vacancy, or maybe you're going through a really busy period, you know, and we're excited about the potential for the future. You know, we may, we may be able to develop some specialties, for example, in, in certain areas of plan review, where we can serve the majority of our towns, you know, certain technical expertise within the building inspection field itself. We would also, at some point in the future, like to be able to add an apprenticeship in a an apprenticeship component to the mix, so that we can train building inspectors, new people coming into the field at CROG, and then see them move on to work in our member towns. I'm involved in an effort at the state level to create an apprenticeship program as well. So that's some of what we're hoping to accomplish in the future under that initiative.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Matthew? Everybody's good? Okay. Thank you once again for visiting with us. We appreciate it. We know that CROG does a lot on our behalf, and we look forward to our future relationship going forward.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Really appreciate your involvement. Hope the rest of your meeting goes well.
Thank you so much. Have a good rest of the night.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Bye now.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay.
Okay, I believe that brings us to item two under my-
Item number two? Yep.
Under my report, Aviation Commission Subcommittee Discussion. And my notes, I think I commented at the last meeting about the desire to bring together a subcommittee to work on a list of projects and planning, most notably, you know, the apron repair, possibly runway and taxiway extensions, T-hanger design and construction, the AWAS and poppy installation, building assessment rehabilitation, and safety and security assessment, like the fence that's going in, the project that we're working on currently in the pipeline, cone, wind cone and segmented circle, things of that nature. So I know that it's an item under new business for consideration in terms of forming that committee, and the only thing missing in that is the, is a date in terms of, and I would propose that hopefully, that it's early on in the month of January, is that we could actually pick a date and have at least an organizational meeting, a get-together, to sort of define this working group that will be tackling some of these, or these items, as many of the items as we can get to, in addition to potentially the lease agreement as well that needs to be looked at, and other things that may come up. So that is an item under new business, you know, proposing that there be seven members, and I would hope that we could, after this meeting, set a time and get a date for January.
Okay.
Then next is just the opportunity, for just informational purposes, of the town's website and the email notification. The town website provides an opportunity for residents to sign up for email alerts and notices, in addition to the Code Red Emergency Notification System and the tax payment reminders that are found on the main page. So it's real easy to find, just get there to the landing page, scroll all the way down to the bottom, there's a Code Red symbol in the middle, and then underneath that is the, in blue, is the sign up for tax payment reminders, and then our sign up on the bottom for the email alerts. And of course, we also have social media in terms of Facebook page and Instagram that people can follow in terms of notifications and information. But the email alerts notices has four categories, and it's very simple, just, you know, putting in your email to the system, and I think, you know, we don't sell or disperse any of the emails, so, you know, if people are worried about that, that's not a worry, not a concern. There are four categories of urgent alert, news or announcement, and then we have the meeting agendas and meeting minutes. So I think it's, and you can just go through and check the boxes on what information that you'd like to receive. So I think it's just a great tool that might sometimes get lost and people forget about, but, you know, again, there are times when I take calls for people about, whether it's a sewer payment, tax payment, that's a valuable service, email alert about, you know, hearings and meetings and so forth, and then just, you know, reading the minutes or attending meetings. So it's all, it's all right there, and it can be pushed out. All you have to do is just go online and send us, input your email, and it comes out. So that's my public service announcement for this month.
Madam Chair.
Well done.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have a question. Is that something, do you think, that has to be updated every once in a while? Because I know people that initially signed up for it and then got dropped out of it, and they had to go back in and redo it. So is that supposed to happen, or is that just maybe a glitch?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. I think that's something we're going to add to our list in terms of the review and revamp of the website, and they'll get the backend and our database there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
All right. Thank you.
Want to keep it, make sure it's up to date and-
Yep.
-keep everybody informed.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think that's it for me, and I'll turn it over to Andy for happenings.
Did you, sorry?
No, wait till your-
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Oh, my goodness.
So we do have a few happenings for today. First is Christmas tree disposal. So Plainville residents may dispose of their Christmas trees at no cost, either at the transfer station or by leaving it at the curbside. At the transfer station, trees may be disposed of at 23 Granger Lane at any time from Monday, December 26th through Friday, January 20th. Trees should be placed in the designated bin that is right outside the transfer station, and all decorations must be removed from the trees, including if the tree is transported in a bag, the tree should be taken out of the bag. But there is a designated bin there. Additionally, curbside collection, the roadways department will be collecting trees from residents at the curbside. Residents are asked to leave their trees at the curb during their trash pickup day anytime from Monday, January 9th until Friday, January 20th. Trees must be free from decorations as well, snow and ice, and trees should not be placed in the roadways, should not block sidewalks or any walkways. Any questions regarding this? Questions can be directed to the Public Works Administration at 860-793-0221, extension Revenue and tax collection, starting January 1st, 2023, the town will be collecting the second installment of real estate and personal property taxes. Additionally, the town will be collecting the motor vehicle supplemental bills. All bills will be considered delinquent after February 1st. From the Senior Center, for any information on the programs that I'm about to talk about, you may call the Senior Center at 860-747-5728, and all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. The first event is Help for Veterans. Eric Vickers, a State Department of Veteran Affairs official, a veteran service officer, will be at the Senior Center on January 4th, 2023. He'll be available by appointment only, and individuals who are looking for assistance navigating veteran services can work with him. His phone number is 203-805-6343, and again, you call that number and schedule an appointment. Caregiving Connections, on Tuesday, January 10th at 10:00 a.m., individuals providing 24/7 care are invited to join the support group to discuss their experiences and challenges, best practices, and things like that. That'll be at the Senior Center. Telephone Bingo is back, on Thursdays from 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., starting on January 12th. You can play bingo over the phone or on Zoom without ever having to leave your home. Individuals interested in playing should register with the Senior Center, and you will receive a bingo card when you register. Prizes are also available for winners. Grandparents raising grandchildren, that group will be meeting on Tuesday, January 17th at 10:30 a.m. Grandparents or relatives who are raising a grandchild, niece, or nephew are welcome to join the support group at the Senior Center, where resources, ideas, common joys and challenges are discussed. Memory Cafe at the Senior Center, on Thursday, January 19th at 2:00 p.m. Individuals experiencing changes in their memory and their caregivers are invited to join the Memory Cafe, which is a safe, supportive social gathering for people experiencing similar challenges in life. And the last event is Let It Snow and Let Us Snowshoe. You can call the Senior Center to join the snowshoe adventure list. If it snows and if conditions are appropriate and good for snowshoeing, the Senior Center will contact the individuals on this list and organize an outing. There are five pairs of snowshoes at the Senior Center, so if residents need a pair, there's some available, and the list will be maintained throughout the winter season. So if you're interested, call the Senior Center. And that's all I have.
Okay. Okay. Thank you both for your report. Does anybody have any comments or questions for either Michael or Andy regarding the report tonight?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Rosemary.
Just wanted to ask town manager, in terms of publicizing the email alert system, will there be sort of some new efforts to try to publicize that? I mean, especially considering that so few people get daily newspapers anymore, the newspapers don't cover the local news like they once did. I think it's such an important and valuable service.
Yeah, good point. No, a great idea. I think we can. We'll work on that, for sure.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, if I may.
Yeah.
I put on social media today a little bit announcement-
Oh, good.
-that kind of correlated with the town manager's report, so there's something out there now.
Great.
And I also send the happenings report to the Hometown Connection-
Yep.
-and they get published. And I was intending on including this as well in that report-
Good.
-so hopefully the editors include that as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rosemary. Anybody else have any questions or comments? No? Okay. Thank you both very much for your updates. All right. Moving on to the public comment section during this portion of our meeting, we welcome the public to come and speak to the council. Please use that podium. You will be given three minutes, and please state your name and address when you come to the podium. So we have one already, so. Hello, Cassandra.
Hello. I missed the introduction for Board of Ed, so it's just an addition.
Okay.
So I don't know if you're looking for a Board of Ed update, but I'm Cassandra Clark, 39 Pierce Street, Plainville, and I am on the Board of Education as a member. So I just wanted to give you guys a little quick update. I'll stay under three minutes. So we met on December 12th. We had a beautiful chamber choir caroling singing, which was done by the high school. They had a presentation, although Mr. Guarino was not able to be there, he was presented with, for PCS All-Star Service Award for all his work he's done, and also he did an amazing statue of a wolf that's next to, I believe it's Wheeler School, but don't quote me on that.
That's right.
Yeah. Approval of the minutes. Then we did have an enrollment report that was done by Mr. Lewandowski, which showed the projections for enrollment for the school class size going forward, which all seemed to be pretty much engaged about the same as they have been. I had some questions about the lower age group enrollment and the class sizes for them. However, Mr. Lewandowski did get back to me via email to say there was an adjustment to that number, which was better, a better class size. So if you have any questions about that report, I'm happy to forward any information to you. I'm also here because, so, we had the 2023-2024 Capital Budget Plan that was presented by Mr. Stephen LePage, our superintendent. So we had approved, and I have it in front of me, and I do have copies of the Board of Education request for approval of the capital budget plan that went to the town manager from us. Is that my three minute-
No, keep going. It's okay.
Okay. So in most years, the budget the town has approved for range of 300,000 to 400,000. Our proposal was 4.173 million and some change. This is in a large part due to the inclusion of MSP deferred maintenance that was not included in recent and prior years. Now, we have approved and sent it forward to the town manager so that there is transparency, so there's line items for each item that MSP is in need of repair. Obviously, renovate like new would be something as a goal eventually, if it can still be done, but we're trying to work as a team, and, you know, you have times right now that nobody was intending COVID to be here, or the financial, you know, stability is in question right now, too, and it's hard for everybody. So the, this is sent over to the town manager, so for, eventually for you guys to review. I just wanted to present it just because I'm on the school board, and I thought it was important, because we are going to be asking you guys for quite so much money. I guess there's no other way of putting it. So with that said, I do have a couple copies of that report. And again, everything is line item. They were also going to be going over the items as part as like the most important item. These, the list, the items here is not a list of most important to least important. So on the line items, it's not like the one on the top is the most important, the one on the second is the second most important. It's just, it's just the list, if that makes sense. So we did have that go through. So that's just the beginning of the budget ball rolling. So this is where we're at, and we'll go forward from here. The next thing we have, we passed some new reports for policies that had been under review were passed. They had the board open forum. Just trying to go over things. And obviously, the budget object summary report is what I have. The food service report, they did have a surplus, so that's going to help offset the monies so that the free lunch program can continue throughout the rest of the school year, which is good. There is good news that the Tafelon Grade 5 will be going on a field trip to the Bronx Zoo on May 25th. And that's about all I have for now, which I think is more than enough. I also have, like I said, if you have any questions or you need any reports, I'm sure Mr. LePage or Mr. Lewandowski or myself or-
I'm sure the capital request has arrived at the town manager's office. That'll be part of the council's deliberation when we start doing our budget work, although your budget work sessions will be coming up in a few weeks. Is that right? Like toward the end of January, your-
Yeah.
-budget work sessions will begin?
Yeah. So I just wanted, like I said, just wanted to let you know where we're at. The kids are doing fantastic work at the school. We had so many things going on, so many concerts, and going on at Christmas time, it was great. So here I am.
Okay.
Do you guys have any, well, I should ask Kathy if she has-
Does anybody have any questions for Cassandra regarding the Board of Ed?
I have one. Cassandra, you said something about the free lunch program staying with us to the end of the year. Has that been approved, or is it something that needs to be approved either by the council or the Board of Education?
In the report I have here, it says, "The state's continuing to fund students," okay. "We anticipate the additional state funding for free meals to come to an end during December. After that, we plan to use our surplus from last year to initially continue free meals, our participation." So that's what they're looking to do.
Thank you. I think that's a great program.
So it looks like they're initially continuing free meals, so maybe, it sounded as though that was going to be able to happen, though, throughout the end of the year.
Can you use Esser money for that, or you're, you know, you have funding that, unspent funds from the federal money? It's not the Esser, it's their-
So I'll just read from the top. The report details an operating surplus, so they're in surplus right now of 96- So there are in surplus right now of $96,824 for the month and $113,720 for the year-to-date. Compared this result with year-to-date surplus of $167-plus change the same time last fiscal year. The current month's results include $42,697 revenue from the state to help the districts with their supply chain issues. This is one-time payment. To date, in addition to students eating for free, we accumulated significant surpluses through the course of last year due to the state's increased contribution to our program. And the state is continuing to fund students eating for free for a limited time only this year and at a lower contribution rate. We have anticipate, we anticipate the additional state funding for free meals to come to an end during December. It's an anticipation. And after that, we plan to use our surplus from last year to initially continue free meals.
Okay.
There goes on to talk a little bit more, but there'll be updates in the coming months.
Okay.
So...
Thank you. Any other questions for Cassandra regarding the Board of Ed? Thank you for coming tonight and sharing with us. Always good to see you guys.
Yep. You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thanks again. Okay. Continuing on with our public comments section, does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Mr. Kislik?
John Kislik, is this thing on? How it is. John Kislik, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. I just have to say it. This is the first Monday, not the third, right? I like going along with the rules. But anyway, I want to thank the town manager and assistant town manager for bringing that up, the topic I mentioned last week about having everybody be able to get on the internet and see and read all the agendas and minutes of meetings. Maybe what the Hometown Connection could spell it out a little bit better, because they have the town manager report there all the time. The way I got mine on, when we had, I guess, assistant town manager, I forget his name, the young guy, he put me on there and he was putting everybody else on. I never had to do anything on the internet myself, because I'm kind of a dummy with a computer. So it's been on since then. So maybe it could be explained a little bit more to some other people, because it's really great. I mean, I went on again this week, some real interesting things in the airport. And there's so many things happening, and people can find out who are, who are some of the key players in this town, what's going on at these meetings. And it'll really have them informed when they, when they go to either vote on our budget or see what's going on, where this people are proposing money in these little committees and stuff. Every one of them are so important. It's just, it's just a really great thing. I just hope that me talking about it tonight and the town manager, people can make an effort to do this. Like Deb seems to know some people, because a lot of people watch these meetings, and it would be great. It's just, it's like you're attending these individual meetings. One other thing I have on these, these funds, like what's handed out to the fire department tonight, is there going to be more funds available? Because I noticed every once in a while, some more funds come up. We had the windows at the firehouse, the police station, the air packs. Is there more coming up?
We're not getting any more. We have, you know, we've been allocated a certain dollar amount that we could expend on the projects and concerns that the town has chosen to take care of. We're not getting more funding, and we haven't spent all of the money yet. So I don't know if that helps you. I think the deadline is, is it next year or the year after, Michael?
I believe it's next year, and to obligate the funds, and then a year after that to spend the funds.
Okay.
And you're correct, we won't be getting any additional funds. The two tranches are, have been dispersed in terms of payments that they split, two payments, our allocation, and that we're just working down the list that the council had established through the subcommittee or the committee that recommended that. And so I believe, you know, certainly can give an update to the council as where we are in that, and we're working our way down our, down the list at this point.
We get an update every month as to where we are.
That isn't what I meant for additional. I wondered, I mean, if we still have funds left then?
We do.
That's what I meant.
We haven't spent everything yet.
Okay, so there's going to be more appropriations for different things?
Correct.
Eventually.
There, well, we have earmarked certain projects already for some of those dollars, but they have not been spent yet. So I would say the majority of the money has already been earmarked
Okay.
for certain things, but we haven't yet, you know, authorized the expenditure, because we're not ready to do that yet for certain items.
Okay. Because that's one of the things I was thinking of, which to me is a big capital project in the town, is the new sewer system that's coming in in Honor Heights. I don't know if any of that is qualifies for that, but there has to be parts of that that is benefiting the town with additional sewer systems. And I was just wondering if some of that could be used towards the expense of that project. If not, it's not. But because these people, I'm not going to speak at their public hearing, because I own no property there, and I feel I don't have the right. But I feel for people who are going to be assessed $10,000, even though they can pay it over 20 years. But that's, that's not even probably half of it when they go to tie in that sewer system. Because most of the time, there's sanitary sewer to septic tank goes out behind the house. So if they have to bring it to the front, to the lateral that's left off, they either have to chop up their basement floor or go all the way around their house. And a lot of times, there's a driveway there or this or that. So it's a huge, huge expense, probably more to tie in than it is for the assessment in front of their house. So that's the only reason I'm bringing that up. I like to look out for the little guy. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak tonight that has not done so? Mr. Frangos.
Starting, I would like to wish the town council, town manager, assistant town manager, our recording secretary, and our fire chief a happy and healthy new year. Next, I'd like to mention this again because it's of significance to me. Last year, I requested information regarding the school board, regarding school board information, which I did receive. I would again want to thank our town manager, assistant town manager, and also the Plainville Board of Education for the effort they put into providing me the requested material. Now, a little bit on the town business, which I have a little interest in here, is this has to do with the questions regarding the new distribution center constructed in the north end of Plainville. And the first question I have is, what is the name of the business or who is the owner of that facility?
Is it Stop &amp; Shop? Or is it... I think you might be referring to what I know as Ameri Cold.
Okay. And they do, as I understand, that this is just a hearsay thing. I always say the nasal thing. But this has to do with food distribution?
Correct.
Okay.
Frozen, well, frozen.
It's more of a storage facility for Stop &amp; Shop. It's a frozen food center where Stop &amp; Shop or the regional, the Northeast Regional Distribution, they'll come in there and then it gets, you know, distributed out. So that's the purpose. It's all a frozen food tower.
Got it. No, well, I mentioned in a prior meeting, I worked in distribution myself, but the size of the building, that really catches your attention. That's, but anyway, now, the other second point is, does anybody have the proposed date when the facility will become operational?
I'm not sure if we have a final date. The date's moved around due to a lot of, you know, supply chain issues and things of that nature. Have we gotten an actual date as to when they'll be operational, Michael?
I don't recall. Andy might have some, but I don't, I don't recall there's a specific date. They're working on the certificate of occupancy and under issues, but there's no specific date that I'm aware of.
Well, do we know whether, with this distribution center, and I'm taking a guess at this, at the size of it, will this be a 24/7 operation?
I'm not sure about that. We, it is going to be a place where trucks come and go, and I, to give you the exact hours, would, I don't know that answer. We can certainly find out, but I don't know that.
If I may, ma'am, Madam Chair.
Sure.
The reason I'm asking that particular question is, is I understand it. What I heard, this is what you called, I had asked the question at the prior meeting, and at the time, that's when, Jesus, just when you came into office. And the question I had to do was, did they, they're talking, at the time I heard, 10 trucks, truck every 10 minutes. And my question was, if there's trucks rolling, you know, a truck every 10 minutes, the road they're going to go onto, have we looked at over that it could handle that kind of load of traffic? And you're talking, I'm assuming, if you're talking to a building that size, you're talking tractor-trailers. You're not, the old term is straight jobs. These aren't straight jobs. These are tractor-trailers. And if you've got them rolling every 10 minutes, plus you've got people going to work on that, and that gets busy, that area, plus you have the schools, it's a congested area. And I was just curious if that has really been, I was told yes.
Sure. I'm sure when the application came through our planning and regulatory agencies, that was all looked at.
Okay, but nobody really knows if, in this meeting, no?
Well, we can go back and speak to the regulatory, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Wetlands Commission was involved. There were a lot that were involved in order to have that approved. So I'm sure all that data is available. I just don't have that at the top of my head.
If I may, and I'm not suggesting this for Lou Frangos on 10 Fairbanks Street.
Yep.
Just a curiosity question. The magnitude of this operation, and it seems to be catching everybody's attention as I'm speaking, all right, maybe we needed a representative from the manufacturer, the warehouse supervisors or general managers, whatever, to give a little presentation here to us.
Okay. We, you know, certainly...
A suggestion only.
No, certainly there are contacts that have been made throughout the development of that project. The town has had contacts with people that are involved in that. It's a good idea that the community is introduced to the, to the business once it's up and running, and that's not a bad idea, for us to become familiar with the people that do that. But we'll certainly keep track of that.
Okay. Again, the only suggestion, the reason that suggestion is the size of what we're talking in this.
Massive.
That's right. That's the only reason.
We've been inside there. It's really incredible.
And this is the last one. Just, this is a personal thing, all right, from attending the meetings. I'm sitting over there, the TV is pointing over here, all right, and I'm hearing talk, and it does, it doesn't resonate. My question, now that that's said, is I know we're confined the way the building's set up, but is there any way we could possibly mount a screen there behind you folks?
Um...
I mean, again, I'm not saying to do anything. It's just, you lose interest in what's going on when you're sitting, not looking at a screen. All you hear is words.
Yep.
But how would we watch it though? Behind us?
We'd have to sit down.
You have swivel chairs. I already wrote that down.
We'd have to move to...
Or just a second monitor.
Yes, Michael.
I would suggest a second monitor. Rather than reorient the council, potentially we could look at a configuration that would have another monitor there so that if the, you know, we can look, we can look at it. But I don't know if it's possible. We'll talk...
The technology that's going on here to keep it moving, we'd have to look into how we could do that.
Oh, yeah. Please, I'm not saying to move the council around. If it came to that, I don't suggest that at all. It's just too much.
Well, we could do it for the presentation and then just resume our positions here. We've done that before, where a screen behind us was projecting information, and then we'd come back up here. So anything's possible.
Again, this presentation was interesting, don't get me wrong, but the first time this ever hit me was when we started talking about the trail.
Right.
And the place was loaded up, and everybody was going crazy about what streets they're going to be on and all that. And then they're showing, well, here, look at the map.
Okay.
And when you're sitting over here...
Sure.
Okay, enough said. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
And your patience.
Thank you. Happy New Year. All right. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else has a comment for the council? Last chance. If not, thank you. I will close the public comments section. We'll move along. We do not have any old business, so we are into our new business section of the meeting. Item number one, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to authorize the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for fire equipment purchase in the amount of $346,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to waive the bid process to award bid number 2023-17 self-contained breathing apparatus to MES Shipman's Fire Equipment Company, Waterford, Connecticut, in the amount of $346,034.50.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to establish an Aviation Commission Subcommittee for the purpose of negotiating an amendment to the lease and operating agreement with Interstate Aviation and to discuss possible recommendations to the airport master plan. The Subcommittee will be made up of seven members as followed. Town Council Chairman Pagliisi, Town Council Vice Chairman Underwood, Town Manager Paulus, Assistant Town Manager Sirali, Consultant Robert E. Lee, Aviation Commission Chairman David King, Aviation Commission Member Francis Cooley.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion?
Madam Chair, I have a question. Is it supposed to be Francis Cooley?
No.
No, it's a different person.
It's a different person.
Different person.
Okay. Just checking. Thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number four.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion for the Town Council acting as the water pollution control authority to establish a public hearing in the municipal center at 6:30 p.m. on Thursday, January 19th, 2023 to hear public comment regarding the proposed Honor Heights Sewer Project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. That takes care of that part of the agenda. Other discussions of interest, we do have one item there. Michael?
Yeah, just a...
You'll carry that.
Point of interest of the Charter Revision Commission organizational meeting will be happening Thursday night at 5:30, and I'd like to thank Cindy for all her help in coordinating, putting that together, and they'll be off and running on Thursday night.
Great. Get them going. Excellent. Okay. Anything else you'd like to discuss, or that's it for tonight?
That's it for me.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to bring forward? Okay. May I have a motion to go into executive session for a lease negotiation?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. All right, we'll take a brief pause.